...of the Planning Commission for Tuesday, November 19th. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, Madam Clerk, if you could do the roll call?
Roll call. Chair Pietrowski.
Here.
Vice Chair Kopek. Secretary Hammond.
Present.
Board Member Houlihaiza.
Here.
Board Member Cantor.
Here.
Board Member Stansberry.
Here.
And Board Member Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a forum.
Okay, thank you. So, we have before us the agenda. If anybody has any comments or necessary modifications or suggested modifications to the agenda, we'll entertain it at this time, otherwise we'll entertain a motion to approve as written.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the agenda's approved. So we'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes. We have the regular meeting, September 17th. We also have a copy of the joint meeting minutes, which I presume will proceed to the City Council for as well, unless they've already done so.
I believe they were, I did that last night.
Okay, very good.
Just one adjustment on the meeting minutes from the meeting of September 17th. In, under New Business, PC 8919, there is listed a motion by Commissioner Cantor.
Yeah.
He wasn't here, so it must have been somebody else.
Yeah. But that's the second time that's happened, so I must have a big presence on it.
Other than that, the meeting minutes look good to me.
The only thing I see is the reference to August 20th date on the bottom.
Oh, okay.
Which is probably just a hangover from the previous.
Yeah, the footer. Oh, there is one correction in the joint meeting minutes, under...
Well, we can...
You want to do that separate?
Yeah, we'll handle that separately. So, we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes as, with the small corrections as noted.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion is passed, and we'll move on to the approval of the joint meeting minutes.
So, similarly in the joint meeting minutes, under Planning Member Presence, for the Planning Commission, Bruce Cantor's listed there as well.
I'm just everywhere.
Okay, if there are no other comments or corrections, we'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as written, with the one modification.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, meeting minutes for the joint meeting of October 29th, 2019 are approved. So we'll move on to the public comment session, where anybody in the audience can speak to us on any issues that are not listed on the agenda, anything. Hearing none, we'll move right on to New Business, the Comprehensive Plan Existing Conditions and Future Land Use map. So, I'll turn this over to the City Planners.
I'm going to kick this off, then go over the plan that you have in front of you, which should hopefully be a few pages of the existing conditions that were modified for this today. So we did go back and double-checked our work, found a few typos and inconsistencies that were addressed, so we're just going to kind of walk through the plan a little bit, and I'll hit a couple of highlights on some of the existing conditions.
Madam, is there another copy? Yeah. Thank you.
So, the first part of the document just kind of talks about the purpose of the master plan, you may all be familiar with this, but basically, we'll just kind of walk through, it talks, we'll look at the housing of the city, you know, there's not a whole lot of change there, but you could look to the future, you know, we're going to look to the future and say what kind of housing might we want to see in the future, based on where the population and ages going, and things like that. There'll be a section about transportation, so I know that's been a topic, there's been some talk about the non-motorized network going through, so we'll make sure all that's included in here. Obviously, there's some implications with the development of Southfield Road, so we'll want to know what happens if that do or doesn't happen. So those are some of the things we'll be looking at in the transportation. We'll take a look at the Village Center and commercial development, particularly along Southfield Road. We do have the corridor assessment that's going on right now as well, that we have some data on coming up soon. So we'll be taking a look at the commercial development and kind of how that ties into the neighborhoods, and how we can improve that a little bit. Talks about the relationship between the master plan and the zoning ordinance, so this is, kind of gets later on in the plan when we get into the implementation strategies, how does the zoning line up, so it talks a little bit about that. And then move on to the planning process. So, that's a little bit of basic information there. And then, we talk about the role of the city boards and commissions. The DDA will be a little bit involved, particularly in the corridor assessment portion of that. And then, the one thing that we are also doing with this plan is the Recreation Plan Update. So there's a little blurb about the Recreation Plan Update, that will be included as, like, almost an appendix to this plan, but it will be a standalone as well, so there's a little blurb about Recreation. Getting into the actual existing conditions of the city here, we talk a little bit about the region and how that's growing, so a lot of our, the data that we compare Lathrop Village to in the plan is also the Oakland County and surrounding communities, so we give a little intro on the regional influences there. Little section on the city of Southfield's future land use on page 11 there, that talks about the implications that that may have, as the city is completely surrounded. So, there wasn't a whole lot of change to that, there was a few tweaks, but most of that. The population and households and the demographic data is where we really see some of the current, some of the changes from the last plan, and where the city is headed. The population has decreased slightly since the last, since 2010, by about 65 residents or 2% of the city, current population, we go over, is 4,010. So, on the following page, we talk a little bit about the population by age, and this is a big topic, really nationwide, considering a lot of communities are seeing them age, their communities age, as people are staying in place, younger residents may be leaving and not returning. So those are some of the trends we like to look at. Lathrop Village is slightly older than some of the surrounding area, Oakland County, the Semcig region, the state and the US as a whole, so that's something to take a look at. But, some of the other things that we did notice in 2000, or in the chart two here, this should actually be, it's 2017 data, so that's a little typo in the title there, but it is 2017 data that was updated, and we can see that there was, one thing to kind of look at, there was, since 2010, the city has added residents in the 20 to 24-year-old age cohort, so that's encouraging, as, you know, some of the other communities, those residents aren't returning, so that's good to see that. And then the under five, the family-forming type of ages, so there was a slight increase there, which was also good to see. Households, looking at, this is the 2015 data, 61% of the households in Lathrop Village have two or more people without children, I think that's pretty consistent across the area, 20% live alone, and then 17% do have children. Moving on to the household composition, this kind of looks at the average household size, those types of things, so Lathrop Village has a little bit larger average household size than the region, so that's something to keep an eye on there. And then, educational attainment, that's actually a very strong point for the city, the educational attainment is higher than the county and Michigan as a whole, both for high school graduates and those with bachelor's degrees. So, that is encouraging to see. There's a little blurb about housing here, gets into, I don't think this is going to surprise anyone, that there hasn't been a whole lot of new builds, no new builds, since 2010, and most of the housing stock was built about 16, 17 years ago. And then, that page gets into the type of housing that the city has. 88% of the housing is single-unit detached, and then, so this chart is actually by area, so this big blue section in the middle of page 15 here, that represents all the single-family units, and then it gets broken down by the remaining ones. So as, as you can see, there's a few of the other unit types mixed in there, but it's predominantly single-family detached, so that may be something to consider when we talk about housing in the future, that folks that are aging and that want to stay in the community may be looking for somewhere that has a few more amenities for the senior population, or even community amenities, you know, if there's senior housing and that type of thing, so that could be something to take a look at as we look at the housing stock. We'll get into the discussion, particularly of the future Lathrop map. And then we talk a little bit about just the existing transportation network within the city, that really hasn't changed over the last 70 years, so the actual transportation chapter, we'll get into a little bit more of some recommendations for that, what you want to see, but this just gives a little overview of the existing transportation. Next page, we go over the existing land use, there's, you know, as the previous page kind of showed, mostly single family units there. Then we talk a little bit about the existing historic district, and sort of how that's had an impact on the development of the city, and how we've gotten, how the road network was developed, how the, you know, sort of Village Center was envisioned, and that sort of thing, so there's a little blurb about that in there, and then the following page shows the local and national historic district. So that was just a brief introduction on sort of the existing conditions of where we're at, some of the things that we are taking a look at right now. I think this is a good time to pause, if there's any questions or comments on any of the data you've seen, that you'd like to see compared to the region or anything, so... Hearing none?
No, as we were going through, we will continue to refine some of the way this information is presented, some of the comparisons, I think, might be interesting to see as maps as well, so we probably, you may see, when you see this again the next time, it may look a little bit different, based on the ways in which we think it's maybe more interesting or engaging, or helps understanding with some of the information that we're presenting. One of the things that we handed out to you with our information last week was a sheet with the goals stated at the top, and then a circle with the word in the middle of it. And we wanted to do a little bit of an exercise, thinking about the master plan, it's an update, we, as we talked about at the joint meeting, and with the Planning Commission previously, did it seem as though we needed to rewrite the whole master plan, and the answer was no, it doesn't. It seems like we're all on board with the vision and the future land use map as identified in 2015, and before that, really in 2009. But, when we were thinking about the goals, in particular, not to change them necessarily, just for the purpose of changing them, to update the master plan, but really wanting to make sure that the goals, they encapsulate everything that we have in mind. So we thought we would do a little bit of an exercise, and hopefully the, I kind of forgot about the cameras with this, but hopefully they'll be able to catch up with us. So we thought we would just do that. So we thought with...
Oh, careful. You turned it into an easel.
Yeah.
Do we have an easel? Can you get one?
Does that work? Because this is okay, like this. If it works for you. All right, so, does it work for you?
You can see, as long as it's stable.
All right. Do you have my, do you have those little...
Yes.
Okay, so we have the Village Center, was our first one, right?
Yes, Village Center.
So what I did was, in this graphic, I took the center as the Village Center, so walkable, and I just took the words right out of the goal. And what I want you to think about is what's missing, if anything, if it makes sense, and if we captured the things that you think of as being important. So that was our first one, it looks really nice in my picture that I did. But these are all of the things that we talked about in terms of the Village Center, we talked about it being a walkable area, we talk about housing, the goal says, "Create a Village Center, redevelop properties in the historic Village Center of the city from suburban strip-style development into mixed-use, multiple-story, walkable downtown for the city. Provide opportunities for residential housing, retail, restaurants, office, and entertainment uses. Ensure this area reflects the character of surrounding neighborhoods." And I feel like when we pull all these words out, these are all things that are pointing towards the Village Center, what that means, but do we have everything? Is there anything that we missed? Or is there anything that maybe we want to refine so that it is a little bit even more clear?
Well, when I was reviewing this, two things kind of creeped into my head. One was the concept of walkable, which is, there's been some debate about since the previous master plan, and the city approved an ordinance modification to include planned unit developments, which, you know, ostensibly was, you know, triggered by a request for a drive-in restaurant that was in conflict with the concept of a walkable community. So, I was thinking to myself, well, of course, we want the Village Center to be walkable, but it can't be exclusively walkable, and we've made some adjustments to the ordinance in order to kind of address that concept. So, the question I had about, that was just in my own mind, was how do we balance that? The idea of a walkable district that also provides some mechanism to support some vehicular traffic for certain uses, right? The planned unit development concept and the ordinance kind of creates the space for that to happen, but from a planning perspective, right, how do we balance those two things? And do we need to include some concept of some sort of transportation, I know it's addressed in other parts of the plan as well, right, in others of these bubbles that we're going to get into, you know, transportation is a separate thing, but walkability is a way of, mode of transportation, what about other modes of transportation? What about bikes? What about, you know, scooters? What about, you know, things like that?
Well, the issue of bike paths has been discussed and raised in the past, and efforts of establishing what those routes are, although they're not necessarily as clearly marked, I think there was some discussion about signage a while back, and I don't know what's come forward on that, but...
We still have an application.
Still for funding?
Yeah, we are encouraged to wait for the sun to come up, since there's a little bit more flexibility for that, so, we're still running.
Still something that's in the works.
Right. Does it make a difference if we say who or what this area is supposed to attract? So, to serve local residents as well as those from the region, which might also get into the fact that the regional people are going to probably be coming in their cars.
And they need to place the parking.
Or through transit, and that might be another...
Parking has always been a subject of discussion, it's not something that's appeared on this list, but, and is certainly a critical factor, you know, looking forward.
And parking in the Village Center maybe would be addressed differently than parking in the commercial district, right? Because of the fact that the Village Center is intended to be this a little bit more unique space in the city, that, you know, supports a lot of different uses.
And higher density.
Yeah, more, higher density, exactly, a lot more things going on in a relatively small area compared to the commercial district.
So writing in, higher density, multimodal transportation, a destination for residents in the region. Certainly, we see the mix of uses, and then we've said what some of those might be, they might be housing, entertainment, retail, and restaurants, multiple-story.
But I think your point about, like, who, what's the purpose of it? Who's being drawn here? It addresses so many different concepts, that I'm doing my own kind of, you know, word bubble thoughts in my head about things like, well, if you want to come here and you want to do business in the Village Center on both the east and west side of Southfield, how are you going to pull that off, right? Like, those types of things need to be addressed, and I think who gets, who the intended audiences will bring up conversations about how to define the city's strategic plan and our ordinances in order to support that.
Well, on a very basic level, walkable, I think, started with the concern with that interconnection between east side and the west side, because of Southfield Road, and it, you know, remains a challenge, it will probably remain a challenge even as Southfield Road gets redeveloped, especially if that moves ahead of any sort of increase in density and, you know, more of an identity of the Village Center, in terms of development.
And I was just thinking about that, when you were saying, you were starting to say the identity of the Village Center, we haven't really necessarily said what that is, described some of the characteristics, and we've also said that it needs to be compatible, the area reflects the character of the surrounding neighborhoods.
What does that mean?
And do people know what that means?
Yep. That's a great question.
Does it need to reflect it, or is it enough to, like, I guess, that's to reflect, what do we mean when we say reflect? Does it mean everything else is one and a half to two stories?
It might be more accurate now, and from one interpretation, saying it's, in scale, it's in scale with residential, but we've already decided it really shouldn't be to create the environment that we would like to create.
So it's opposed to that concept of kind of blending in?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, may I maybe establish the framework, because I'm not sure what, what the purpose of our, of our conversation is under this new business. I appreciate Jill's efforts to sort of get us back there, to remind us of these, because these maps indeed are reflective of a very, very holistic, and extensive, and very complete process that we engaged in four or five years ago. And so, I think it's incredible that we've created these goals and objectives, and we've articulated in some of them very specific action steps. So I wondered if, what is, what is your vision of this exercise? Is it that you are seeking, is it a confirmatory process that you want from us, because I, because while we are the commissioners, I think this is something that we've already engaged in, in such a very extensive way, and I think we're only maybe talking about Goal One, which is, I think, was the most, was the prominent goal, based on a series of stakeholders' process. So, I understand that we've all agreed that the updating of this plan is indeed very incremental. So, in my mind, what I would like to know is an update of some of those objectives and the actions, because that would inform, at least for me, how we would move forward in continuing the established master plan. So, I wondered if, if the conversation might go along that pathway and that, because if, if your design is for us to talk about each of these goals, I, it seems to me that it is duplicative of something that we have done already, and that was much more comprehensive. So I, I wondered what you think would be a sort of a more utilitarian approach to moving us along on this master plan.
Well, we have a more utilitarian approach, we can just read over the goals and see that they generally make sense, are people generally feeling confident that those goals that we developed in the 2015 plan are still the goals, in fact. It could be a very simple exercise, we can just read it, does everybody understand it? Does it make sense? Are we still all on board with that? This was only a way of making that process a little bit more thoughtful. We can, we can read the sentences and know what they mean, but my idea with this was to say, or to ask, did we get everything? Do we include everything in here that we are intending to include? So yes to your first question, is this affirmative, to affirm what we've talked about? Yes, I didn't expect people to say, no, you know what, we don't want a mixed-use area at all, we think it should just all be office, or forget walkability, that's not important, and it should all be one story. Like, I really did not, I expected everybody to go, yeah, that sounds about right, and then to offer up some additional refinements, like multimodal transportation might be important, to consider that this, this area, the Village Center, will serve residents as well as... to consider that this, this area, the Village Center, will serve residents as well as those folks coming from the larger region. Because I think that's important as you're updating the plan, because otherwise, we could, it can be very simple. I mean, we could really just go through it and tweak the implementation strategies and be done. And that's fine, too, if you largely feel like everything is, is already stated in a way that's very clear. And that's fine, also.
No, no, I, I, I understand the incremental approach, and you just want, one, a verification that, that is indeed still reflective
Right.
of the, the city's wishes. But I wonder if there are other approaches is...
We can go through those other things and just go through them one by one and look at those, because you have that, right? The, this.
Yes, but I think, I think what interests me most is the, the extent to which some of these actions have actually been implemented.
Been accomplished, yeah. And I think that's, I think that's actually, yeah, a part of it. And, and I, I will say that when I went through, yeah, the item on, it's listed as page one here with the green bars, it was like, oh, here's a checklist. I wonder how we're doing, because it's blank.
Right. Well, this is from 2015.
Mm-hmm.
And we've had a lot changed.
Right.
From, a lot has changed.
I think that if we knew what we have achieved, if we knew what we've accomplished, then that might indeed inform us. It serves as a formative process. It informs us then where we are, and we could perhaps more systematically address maybe that particular goal. And what, what were the things that were, were achievable?
Right. And starting out, I mean, I'm going to take a step back just to this diagram for a minute, and I don't mean to take it off track, but, I mean, this effort is really, I mean, that piece of it is, these are all the things that we thought should be, you know, like important parts of the, the Village Center. And there's certainly things I'm sure we've discussed in the past that may not have made it up there. Like, the one that's coming to mind right now is public gathering space. So, there's an item that can be added. And then from there, the process that we went, we've been through before, Charo and I have been involved with, we have quite a few members who have not been through the process yet, so, but I think both approaches may have some validity here. I, I, I'm feeling like I'm getting back up to speed with, okay, we're, we're getting on board the train again, and where, where is this supposed to take us? What do we have to, you know, re-acquaint ourselves with and, you know, follow, follow a path to making decisions about what we feel needs to happen, if anything needs to change with the master plan? And I think in general, as you stated, we've already stated that, so, some of this is, in the exercise, I guess, is just that step in trying to get us back to the process of thinking about it.
But either, whatever way you feel is the most productive for you all and facilitates the best conversation. So, we can skip to this if that's what...
Well, here's, here's a question, Jill.
Yeah.
Using the train analogy. The train started in 2015.
Train started in 2009.
2009.
Yes.
Going in one direction with a goal.
Yes.
In 2015, it got modified, going in the same direction with the same goal. It's 2019. For someone new, can you at least put something together that shows what got done? Because right now, all I hear is that we're on the same train, going in the same direction with a bunch of blank pieces of paper that have nothing done.
And, and we haven't gotten there yet.
Well, the reason we haven't gotten there yet is because the train is going the same place. Until we pick, change the destination, you're not going to get anywhere different. So, the question is, is along this destination, have things actually been done that can be said, this is what got done?
We can do that.
This is what, like, the 15 items.
Yes.
And in that way, at least people can see, the people who are watching can see that if you weren't here in 2015, these were the goals. You may or may not agree with where the goal is, but at least these things got done. But from a outside perspective, what you see now is a train that's still on the same track with no thing that's ever shown that's been done.
And to continue the train analogy, I might also throw in that, that it's not just about the train and its destination, that the train is still going to the same destination in, in very slow, maybe it's not getting very far.
It's a very slow train.
That might not be because the destination isn't right. It might be because the staff, the train conductor has changed, the people, the engineer has changed, the person that feeds the coal.
We ran out of coal. We ran out of coal. Between 2007 and 2014, we had no coal.
And environmental condition. There's logs on the track. There are, there's a harsh, there was a harsh wind. There's a lot of other things besides the destination.
I'm beginning to feel...
But sticking with the analogy...
But we can say all that.
When you have all of those things, you have to adjust.
Right. Do we pick a different destination?
And what we haven't seen, what, speaking personally, or sitting in the audience, what you don't see is what got done when those adjustments were made. You just don't see it. I mean, like, like you just mentioned, Jason, the, the whole walkability. I've sat here and watched people stand up and say, we should stop talking about making it walkable, but if we've done something that's made it something walkable, we should say what that is. If we've done something that has created, you know, a lot of people may or may not know about bike paths, but we're not, if we don't say, we don't show accomplishments, we're just repeating the same. It's less like going on a tour. If you don't tell me that something actually happens on the tour, it's just the same tour, until I actually see a picture that says, oh, look, there really is something there. And right now, I don't think we're showing people that there's something actually happening.
I think that's all true, and that's a really good conversation to have. And I also think it's true that just because there are a number of things that haven't been done, there may be more of a compelling reason to continue to do those things. So, maybe there is a more compelling reason to continue trying to make the community more walkable. For example, you've got older residents in the community who may be limited in their mobility options. You've got people that live in four different quadrants of the city divided by major thoroughfares that are unsafe, unpleasant, and dangerous. And is that important? Does it matter? Does it matter to your community that, that people could feel like they are in different pockets, and they may not even be part, feeling like they're part of the same community? Is it hard for people to get here from other parts? What about just general public health, community health, the ability to walk from place to place? The ability to go and take care of some of your daily activities right here by walking or riding a bike? Or rollerblading, as, as one planning commissioner said he liked to do several years ago. Just because we haven't achieved some of those things doesn't mean that they're not good and worth pursuing. But those are the conversations we have. Like, is that still a good goal that we should have? Should we be walkable?
To Les' point, what's been accomplished, right? If we can see, like, if we'd see some list that shows us a series of some things that got accomplished, then we can know, okay, we made progress on this item, we didn't make progress on this item. So, we can make, have some informed conversations about...
We had that conversation at the joint meeting. Like, that economic development strategy report, that update, if you recall, I prefaced that report by saying, almost all of those items that are, that we touched on in that they are all taken from this list of goals. It was just shumbled up and reordered. And so, we have, like, we, we have accomplished things. Like, one of the first things on that list was re-engage with SMART and to provide transportation alternatives. Yes, we have accomplished that. That was not something that was, that was not, that was not part of, that was, that was nonexistent back in 2000.
I think what we're certainly hearing here is that that should probably be the starting point for engaging the, the commission so that it gets us really sharply focused on, this is what we've accomplished, these are the things that maybe need to be considered, or are there other things that need to be considered? And it gives a, a better context to make a decision without it being necessarily just an, an abstract concept.
Well, and that's why we started, no. And that's why we started with the goals, because it makes sense, in my mind, in terms of process, to have everybody on board that the goals are all accurate and reflective so that we look at the action strategies, thank you, that we aren't worried about action strategies that don't matter because we don't value that goal anymore. If there's action strategies on here that aren't, that aren't finished, how will we know whether they're valid to keep them on here unless we've already agreed that the goals are still the goals? So, that's why we started there. But if you prefer to do it the other way, we can change the, the format of this, we'll have to do it, obviously, next month, but write up a report that talks about maybe within some of those goals, what has happened, where the city has made progress in achieving certain things, and maybe where there hasn't been progress, we can identify some of the reasons why. And we don't need to be talking about, you know, the train conductor, or the coal, or the logs on the railroad tracks, but actually, like, the reality of what's happened. You've had a lot of staff changes, we've had the economy, and we can be honest about those things. But then still talk about why, why the city might want to keep that as a valuable goal based on all of the planning that you've done over the last 10 years.
I mean, I guess the, my, my point is, it helps to have a, some data on what has transacted, so you can at least, for people who don't have the history of the old plan, it gives us a starting point of, this was the goal, and these were some of the things that got completed for that goal. And now, now we're working towards, it might be the same goal, but here's the next goal. So, now we can start to identify some of the things that may be completed for the next goal. Because what I see on a, as a goal for the city, that we want multi-story in a Village Center, but then I sit in a meeting with property owners, and they're nowhere close to investing the kind of money to do it. And if the city's not going to build it, and the property owners aren't going to build it, the question I would ask is, are we sure multi-story is going to be the right goal? Maybe it's a mixed use, but maybe it's not multi-story as we think multi-story is. I mean, and that's just part of identifying the goal as multi-story is one thing, but now you have to get into the detail. The details of each of those circles is already complicated in itself, which makes the overall goal even more complicated. And since we know we can't get to the end of this and get everything done, at least we'll know, we got these things done, and if we focus on this one here, we can get these things done. And if we focus on this, which may have impact on some of these broader things, that's, and I think, and I also think that the residents would, it'd be helpful to communicate what's been done, so people know that these things have been done. So, people, so you'll have people stand up and say, well, city's not walkable, it's never going to be walkable, and I don't know what you're talking about being walkable. And then someone says and goes, oh, we got really nice paths for six, 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 six. And then they say, oh, I didn't know that, because we don't commu, is that sometimes we just don't communicate some of the things we've done. So, I think that list helps communicate that.
It seems to me that I recall, Jill, that we had versions of this where you, you actually provided the status. I recall seeing a list like this, where you, you indeed indicated the lead body, or bodies that would be responsible for doing that. We had priori, we did prioritize them, so those at least would be helpful. And then if we understood what has been achieved, I think that would, for us, I, I still think this is important, a, a version of that. But perhaps we might come to that as we review the concrete plan, because it might, these, these things might be emerging as part of that conversation, but I, but I think if we overlaid information that we already have, particularly what we've achieved, then it might have the effect of telling residents that we, we have a plan. It is, for the most part, it is a good plan, because it is reflective of your wishes. We're going to tweak it a bit, but it works because we have done some of these, so that it becomes a continuous improvement process that we have indeed done this, because I, I think that means a lot if we let our residents know that we have actually completed some of these.
And in our way of the process, that was going to be what we would do next with you, but we can switch it and do it the other way, so.
I, yeah, I, I think...
But I feel, now I feel like, well, here we are.
Well, yeah, I say, here we, we have time, so we, we should be making the most of what we do have in front of us.
I think probably is to, is to decide on the product, process that, that honors how we could provide input.
Right. And so, if we need to go back and provide the information in a way that is, facilitates better discussion or more meaningful discussion with you all, that's fine. We can do that.
And I, I'm looking through these, and there's some, I know we've identified action. I, I can see a lot of objectives, for instance, that do not have actions.
Right.
So, we could work, that could be a series of things that we could work on if perhaps there are...
Or at least a decision of which ones really deserve or need action items.
That's right.
Because they're prioritized or important enough to, to work more diligently at.
Okay.
So, so where we go from here?
Well, we'll, we go back to the drawing board and, and prepare a revised, a revised set of meeting materials, and we'll get it to you before the next meeting, which I think is December 17th. Is that right?
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
That's pretty much the business of, today, we don't have any old business or table items, so we're down to general communications and correspondence. So, is there anything from Scott?
I've got nothing.
Eagle?
Other than I'm happy to have a seat, thank you.
I, at your seats, I passed out our Shop Small, some Shop Small information. There's also a three or four week working list of upcoming events, but really, I want you to all focus on the Shop Small. We, that is happening Saturday, November 30th, so, you know, don't spend all of your money on Black Friday at big box stores. You need to save a whole bunch of money for your Lethwa, Lethwa Village businesses and the Artisan Fair. This is specifically, this list is all of the artisans that our fabulous partner, Courtney McChris, has secured for our first Artisan Fair. It's going to be held downstairs in the community room. So, that's from 10 to 4:00. We are also having a Lethwa Village Business Bingo. So, anyone interested in playing bingo with us, they just need to come to our Artisan Fair, they can get a bingo card, and that will encourage to go out and visit some of our, some of our businesses, which don't have to be small.
So, you get, you cover your card by visiting the different businesses?
Absolutely. And then bring your, bring your card with...
And it's really all cover-all, because they want you to...
Wow. There's, we, we are wildly optimistic. There's going to be dozens of people filling their bingo card, all right? But we'll take just straight up bingo as well. So, if you get a bingo, you can bring your card back. We've got, we're going to be, got little giveaways for, for anyone with bingo. If you fill your card, you are entered into the grand prize, which is going to be a really awesome, awesome gift basket. So, please encourage, encourage your, your friends and neighbors to come and shop our Artisan Fair and Shop Small. And because it is part of Shop Small Saturday in Oakland County, Oakland County is also having their annual Shop Small contest, and there is a number, of course, I did not bring those cards with me. I believe the number you text is 411411. And you text a picture of your receipt from your small business, and you send it to that number, and you are entered into a contest to win up to $5,000 from Oakland County. So, shoppers can win, businesses can win, and everybody can have a grand old time. So, that is, check it out. Other, other updates, since you asked about Southfield Road, we did have a conversation with, we met with the city of Southfield and Beverly Hills a couple weeks ago, I guess it was, and just to make sure that... And just to make sure that, yes, the game's all together, we are all still on the same page, we all wanna still move forward with making sure that Southfield Road gets redeveloped in a way that we've always envisioned. And we have also managed to also have a conversation with the road commission. So, we met with them yesterday. We are, I'm, I'm optimistic. We, we already have a meeting set up for the planners to do the technical things and really start working to ensure our parking mitigation plan is in a good position. The very general timeline is that, they're hoping to, we have a draft of the environmental assessment, a little short one, like, three hundred pages. They still have a few sections that need to be updated and tweaked. They're cautiously optimistic that they'll be able to submit that environmental assessment in spring. Early spring, late spring, we're just gonna say spring. So, I mean, the environmental assessment process is fairly long. I mean, they estimate if, if things go smoothly, and we're like 10 months, maybe, so, we're gonna stay optimistic on this one.
The part that, that caught my attention was the, the parking mitigation and, and the, the statement about the requirement for the city being on board to share whatever the, I assume it's what the environmental assessment comes up with, may suggest that there are going to be costs associated with mitigating, or how the parking gets handled, or what it might mean for properties that are impacted by maybe loss of parking and whatnot. So I know we've talked about that in the past, where they'd be looking at, like, matching, I think it's matching funds would be the right terminology to use, to...
I'm sure that there will be some sort of cost.
So, there's that, that commitment. And so I think, you know, I personally am waiting to find out just where that's going to fall and what it means for the community, and what kind of pressure's gonna come out to, you know, not hold up the project on, on our end, and, and, but what is it going to mean for the city to not do that, to not hold that up? Yeah.
I believe they said too, that the, the match is, it has to be a public lot.
It would have to be on a public property, yes. So, and then, then it would be a cost that the, the federal funds that we need to use, then those funds could be used towards implementing those, those parking solutions, I guess is a good way to put it, on public lands. Yes, something, if it's on private property, that's a different discussion, you know, you can't use those federal funds. So, I anticipate that there's a lot more information that we're gonna get out of this environmental assessment. It's gonna be an interesting learning opportunity.
Yep, yeah, I'm, I'm waiting to find out, so, I think commission will be too.
And then the sense was that we were a lot further along with our parking mitigation strategy than Southfield and Beverly Hills.
Yes.
Well, that's good. That's a good position to be in then.
Yeah, so, and there's, and, you know, there has been a lot of change over there on too, so I, I think they were happy to, to sit down with us and get on the same work, same page with us as well. So, stay tuned. We're having conversations, so it's a good thing.
Okay.
And that's, that's all my updates.
Great. Any other comments? No, anything for you, Cheryl?
We, well, we approved the, last night, we approved the liquor license for Jagged Fork.
Okay. Aha. Great. Any updates on the development of, yeah, projects that are underway but maybe moving slowly and not so obvious? I mean, obviously, we saw the demolition more recently of the building at where the gas station is.
Yes, and we got their engineering plans also yesterday. Yesterday seemed so far away, just, um, yes, we have their engineering plans, so those will be under review shortly. I'm not, I know their original goal was to get all of their underwork, underground work done. Not entirely confident that's gonna happen this year, but, um, concrete can be poured, so, so they're, they're moving along slowly, but not too far off of their own, their own schedule. We have, we have plans for the precise MRI across the street. They're looking to make some parking lot improvements, nothing that you, you all will be reviewing. And we've been having some conversations with some other property owners about making improvements to their spaces, so hopefully you'll see something in the next, the next month or two. So, I do have another one update that's not project related, but these first eight students will be making their presentation on their concepts for the civic center designs on Friday, so if you would like to join us, please let me know.
Since we last met, there was a meeting with the Southfield School Board. Is there any update on, came out of that meeting? I don't know if anybody was there.
Yeah.
I was not, so...
We're just basically looking at ways to work better with them. They're going, Cheryl, you can help me out here too. They, they were going to, we're looking to get a liaison from them at, at our meetings. We're looking to bring back a student liaison, work on communication. I mean, I know they started forwarding us their, their weekly newsletter, I guess. What am I forgetting? There's a few other things.
And we added a link on our website to the school district as well, so there's already been positive and improved communication channels between them and us. And I think they, they've given us a number in terms of the number of Lethwa Village students that are attending, but we emphasized the need to make certain that the information, especially the achievements and accomplishments, because it's really impressive, some of the offerings they have as an educational institution, they're really stellar in the area, and how we can support them in promoting that so that people understand the value that they have with having Southfield Public Schools as our local district. So, it was, it was very positive meeting.
Yeah, and they were gonna work on getting us some statistics that we could publish out to our residents to kinda make them see that, kind of the reputation that they have of not being such a great district is not as, it's not true, at least based, at least based on the statistics that they presented to us at that, that meeting.
That's been a constant battle. It seems like as long as I've been in the community of, with that, I mean, demonstrating it, but maybe getting everyone to feel it, so.
And, and they, and they, they don't deny that they've done a bad job of communicating, you know, their accomplishments to, you know, the, the residents, so...
Did they focus on the achievements of the University High School Academy?
They did, and we, we pressed them a little bit to go beyond that because, you know, obviously, that's a test in school, so the results at that school are gonna be better, but the overall district results were pretty good too, when you, when you included AT&T, oh, AT&T, A, 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 and whatever.
The prep school.
The high school formerly known as Southfield High.
Yes.
Good.
Also, I just wanted to mention, I think all of you received the city administrators' report from me, and there's a number of activities going on in the communities. I wanted to make certain that you're aware of them and take a look at them, and hope, hopefully you'll attend and invite your friends and neighbors as well. The police department is hosting a community Thanksgiving dinner, is that?
It's Friday.
Friday.
Friday. Friday evening. We already have 50 people confirmed, so it'll be a fun evening to get together and just break bread, literally, with, with your neighbors. Also, on your, the night of your next meeting is the tree lighting ceremony, so hopefully you won't talk too long about the planning process so that you'll be able to participate in that as well.
Wasn't the tree lighting at 7? Because I thought it started, I thought the tree lighting started at the same time as our meeting, or am I incorrect?
That's right, it says it starts at 7.
I don't have my calendar with me, but...
I wasn't in charge.
Yeah, 7 and 9.
Get all the cameras out, we'll meet around the tree.
You can meet outside, but I just...
I'm not sure how well that would work, but...
Yeah. All right.
All right, thank you.
Oh, I do want to mention one other thing. We have an update of our, our fees that we charge for all of the activities and the services that the city provides that'll go into effect on January 1, 2020. And we, the council also adopted the new indoor and outdoor rental policy and community service credit program, which will also go into effect in January, and we're really looking forward to having that implemented. And one of the concerns raised was that some community organizations thought they were gonna be in a disadvantage because they would no longer have the one free day a year. But actually, with these community credits, they have far more access to free use of our facilities and parks. So we're looking forward to that partnership, and from that, we've already experienced increased volunteers for some of the programs that we offer, so it's a win-win for all of us.
Great. Thank you. All right. Well, we've reached the end of our agenda. You have a motion to adjourn?
So moved? Second.
Those in favor? Aye. opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.